The board meeting to order, it is five oh two. I don't know.
Four fifty nine.
Giddy up.
Four fifty nine. Um, so our agenda this evening, we have a discussion on the charter spectrum franchise agreement hearing, which may require a vote, public comment, appointments of Dot Master Course to the Land Use Committee and Ron Mayer to the Council on Aging, approval of meeting minutes from nine twenty four twenty four and ten eight twenty four, discussion on Route one thirteen speed limit, discussion on the personnel policy revisions, special town meeting warrant, the project agreement on High Street map fifteen lots two and three B, the land grants program, proclamation of Marion's starter day, many of the topics not reasonably interested by our chair. All right, so let's start with the charter agreement. Been going over that for quite a long time now.
This is pretty boilerplate from previous things, right?
It's almost like the last agreement.
That's what I thought.
There are some changes, but it's largely identical. The last agreement expired in twenty twenty one. So we've ended up with it for a few years and took some chase down, but yeah, what's before you is pretty similar to what's been across.
I don't have a lot of thought and I don't know all the legal jargon that goes with this. Um, I also know that cable companies are sort of up against the wall in general because they're going away. Everything is YouTube TV or Netflix or whatever. So I don't have a lot here other than if it's, you know, Jason's taking a look at it and uses detail review to feel comfortable about it then.
Uh, is this actually a public hearing? Sorry. Then we need to open the public hearing on this. You can reiterate.
Yeah, public hearing open.
Yeah. So the legal notice for the town of Dunsable, the cable vision license renewal proceedings. Town of Dunsable Slipboard has cable television licensing authority under Mass General Laws one sixty six A S one will hold a public hearing on Tuesday or October twenty second twenty twenty four. At five PM, Dunsable Town Hall, five eleven Main Street, Dunsable, Mass, as part of the town's charter spectrum cable television license renewal process. The Federal Cable Act forty seven USC five four six and the Massachusetts License Renewal Regulation two oh seven CMR three point oh five require a public proceeding, the license renewal proposal of the charter spectrum and such change will follow further ascertinement of the community's needs and interests. Public comment is invited regarding the charter spectrum license renewal proposal and the town's cable needs and final action may be taken on the proposed renewal license. Further information, copies, renewal available at the town administrator's office. Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
All good. Just to repeat, now that we're officially in public hearing, um, you know, I think if there hasn't been a lot of changes, it's pretty boilerplate to the previous agreement and it's been a handful of years since it sort of came back up as an issue and we just need to review it. Again, I'm not an attorney, I did not read through this all the verbatim, but it's just probably a status quo.
The only difference when compared to the last agreement that was approved is it's a longer term, ten year term rather than five year. The payment is less because the subscriber base is less.
Yeah.
But it's more than the thing we do now.
It's the asset. Whether it's back to what night you should have.
Yeah.
What's the percentage of saturation? We have a hundred and twenty subscribers.
Hundred and twenty.
Verizon.
Verizon has about doubled basically. It's a little, Verizon has a little more than doubled.
That sort of tells you all you need to know about TV.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Right, seven twelve.
Less than thirty percent of the town. So internet.
Well, that's only with spectrum. Verizon has the rest of the town.
You said Verizon has another two hundred, right? But there's twelve hundred, thirteen hundred households in the town, so that's again less than.
Most of them.
Most of them.
Are there anything else we need to go over soon and sort of go into this a lot?
Yeah, I don't think we have much here with this. We, the Verizon guys kind of spelled it all out, it's going to be a ten day deal. Any changes to the municipal service package, Jason?
Nothing.
Fire station, police, uh, library, they have cable.
So they have the, on the exhibiting. Maybe just the police station. The charter.
How does the fire station watch TV?
Um, I'm not sure, I'll pick up the chain.
Do they wa, yeah, do they watch TV now?
Yeah. The fire station?
Yeah, I mean, but do they use the HD antenna like most people?
No, I had thought that it was tied into spectrum.
Is it charter?
Yes.
Hey Sean?
I think the, I think Sean may have changed it a while ago, but.
Charter?
Yeah. So when the new server got added into the fire station for the radio, I thought we moved that over to charter.
Do you want to move it from the.
No, it doesn't open. So the TV's on, it works. I'm just curious, I didn't see it on the list.
Yeah, no, just the police station's on.
Who do we have here?
Verizon.
So if there was something going on and you needed to watch TV, you know, we have cable in town?
We don't have, no, we don't.
The little HD antenna, that's nineteen dollars from Amazon gets you about a hundred channels around here.
If you wind it up right, there's a little map.
There's a new one out that you just put it next to your window. I just bought one by parents, but they're like, this is amazing. It's a better picture than what they're getting from Xfinity.
This is long, you can confirm. No, this isn't going for long time. It was just a couple of questions. I think we, there's not much to be said about this. What else are you going to go? There it is. Yeah, that's it. It's empty as hell.
All right, we're good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve a cable television renewal license between the town of Dunsable and Spectrum Northeast LLC as presented per a term of ten years.
I will second that.
And for the discussion, none, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have, do we have the final document to sign?
We will have the document signed. If not, we'll go on.
We will before, yeah, before we're done.
Do we want to close the hearing? Or any public comment? I didn't see anybody jumping at this one, so.
All right, so a motion to close the public hearing for the charter.
Yes.
Yeah. Halls in favor?
Aye.
It's Verizon and the fire station. It is that one.
Okay, moving on. Public comment. Anybody out there have something that they would like to offer or ask that is not on the agenda? There's not. All right, very good. We will move on. Appointments. We have two positions open, one for the Land Use Committee and the other for the Council on Aging, and we have one person for each that have volunteered up to fill those spaces. Dot Master Course for the Land Use Committee and Ron Mayer for the Council on Aging. Anybody here that speak to either one of these? If not, then you can speak on behalf of yourselves. Maybe introduce yourself.
Sure. So Dot. I'm Dot Master Course. Been in town for thirty years as a lady mom. So moving forward, volunteer, you can help the town.
Good, thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, my name is Ron Mayer. I've lived in town for twenty four years now. Both my kids have been to Dunsable school systems and for the last sports. So it's, you know, after a lot of sports game, education's been great. I'm in the town and I'm retired, I just retired this year. I have a lot of time that I.
Yeah, congratulations. No, that's.
So I'm in, I'm in to appoint Dot Master Course to the Land Use Committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and a move to appoint Ron Mayer to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
And for the discussion, none, yes, anyone else? Halls in favor?
Aye.
So you'll get a letter from the town clerk to whom gets one in?
Yep, I'm gonna swear Dot in, in a few minutes because she's got a meeting tonight. Nothing like getting right in it and I can do the same for you, Ron, if you want, like five minutes, unless you are planning on staying.
Tighter meeting, fifteen minutes.
Not Council on Aging, the Land Use. Yeah, you're good, yeah.
I'll be in touch.
Go enjoy the fresh air.
All right, great. Well, thank you both for volunteering your time. Next, we have two sets of minutes, September twenty fourth and October eighth.
I'm okay.
Agreed.
Move to appoint, approve the meeting minutes from September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four and October eighth of twenty twenty four.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have a request of Brian Flynn, a discussion on the Route one thirteen speed limit. True authority. Sure.
Hack in the fall of twenty two, standing out in the yard, breaking leaves. Cars will whip by pretty quickly. Enough of concerns, anybody that's on the side of the street. So at that time, I had contacted Jason and Chief Paul. Had a couple of discussions, couple of emails went back and forth. That was prompted by the fact that in January of that year, the discussion was the end of January. Think it was the third of January. One of the final acts of Governor Baker was to sign a law, Safe Roads Act. And in there was a provision that any town official can request of the DOT, and it'll be expedited, that DOT perform a speed study, new speed study on any state road within their boundaries. So that takes up seven miles or so on thirteen. Whether they would decide to do other roads or not, couldn't say. So that kind of sat there in limbo until a couple of weeks ago, on October fourth, there was a letter by a Groton representative bringing the same thing to the attention of Ron, left to the editor. Week after that, the editor responded freely admitting that, as he put it, the audubon that is upon the road, that they have a speed issue. He wasn't so sure that the speed limit adjustment would solve the problem. He had several views on what he thought would be address the issue. And actually, one or two of the points were parallel to what Jason had said back in January of twenty three. So one I consider pretty practical, and that is complete reconstruction of roads that the town wants. But there are other things, and I had discussed a couple with Chief, and at the time, he was just hoping to get the sign that he's got. But Groton already had several of those in place, and they seem to think that they helped. I don't know where, you know, where they'll progress with that person's request. I happened to put a posting on the Facebook page and draw a number of responses. Some of them voiced the same opinion that we've got some raceway problems in town. Some of them, since I pointed out that the impetus behind, there was an impetus behind changing the speed limit and in general, making the roads safer. Obviously, that's pedestrians and bicycles. And a lot of people didn't, it didn't hold too much sympathy for the bicyclists. But many of them, you know, chimed in that people go by their house at quite, quite a speed also. And riding around town, you must see all of the private in place, go slow signs. And so then the other thing is speed statistics and fatalities that result from speed. And there's obviously quite a bit of data on that. And one of the things that I became aware of about two thousand nineteen as a result of an accident that I had in High Boston, Corinello, India Street on the State Street, and a taxi, much, much in noncompliance with the speed limit, hit me on the front end, of course, incident for sure if you were exiting the road, you know, you're coming onto the road. And so I had to prove to the insurance company that I wasn't at fault, he was at fault. Then it turns out that the universal speed limit in Boston of twenty five miles an hour and many other cities around gathered also, unless otherwise posted. And with the data that was available and where the accident took place, visibility issues, I was able to prove that he was roasting in excess of twenty five miles an hour. In doing that, I performed an experiment and I asked my insurance company to perform the same experiment. So obviously, they didn't want to pay for it. The upcharge, whatever it is, five years. And I drove at twenty five miles an hour and was amazed at how quickly you can stop at twenty five miles an hour. Basically, on a dime, almost impossible, unless you're distracted with the phone or something, to get in an accident at that speed. And this chart that shows the difference in the speeds and the stopping distance and goes up rather rapidly to go to thirty miles an hour, stopping distance in twenty five is sixty two feet. Stopping distance at, I mean, twenty, twenty to sixty two feet, stopping distance at thirty miles an hour, goes all the way up to a hundred and six feet, forty miles an hour, hundred and fifty nine feet. So basically, that includes the perception time, the reaction time, and the actual physical braking, what it takes to stop at the top. So I mean, that's pretty much the width of an average walk. We had an accident out in front of a general store a month or so ago. I believe it was due to speed. And I asked the driver that was coming down Pleasant Street how fast he was going, and he wasn't too willing to reveal that. And again, I took on an experiment of driving down the road at thirty miles an hour, thirty five miles an hour, which is the speed limit that section. Would have been pretty hard to get in an accident at thirty five miles an hour. So I feel that one way or the other, we have to address the speed. I mean, you have many options. Getting the speed limits adjusted down. I think that, first of all, speed limits, they're reconsidering the whole process of how to come to speed limits. The way they have done it ages is they set up a clocking of the cars. And the assumption is made that the fastest fifteen percent aren't driving safely or carefully. The other eighty five percent are assumed to be driving safely. I think times have changed. It might have been so in the fifties, but, and basically, people drive, they see the speed limit and they're going to go ten miles an hour over the speed. My daughter's a police officer. She tells me she doesn't stop anybody that isn't at least thirteen miles an hour over the speed limit. So lowering the speed limit would hopefully make them lower their speed, even if it's breaking the speed limit. Hopefully, they'd be down whatever the adjustment. Also, lights, the blinking lights that were suggested for Groton and that sort of thing. So this is something that I would like to interest you in addressing. And what you're feeling is only problems that exist in town.
I'm, I'm not convinced lowering the speed limit is going to make people slow down. I live on a street that already has a twenty five mile an hour speed limit and people are doing forty regardless. It just, they just are. And you paved the road and they're going forty five. So they're obviously not heeding the speed limits. And I, I don't know, I don't have the answers, but it's enforcement, which gets a lot of pressure on the police department. I think it's, the threat of enforcement is what makes people slow down. I don't know how we do that. We only have two guys on at a time and we have forty one miles of roads, so.
One of the comments actually made in my posting was that the police is doing a pretty good job and he slowed down.
Well, there is a reputation that, that Dunsable has, that, you know, they will stop you, but you can't catch everybody. Alan, just, I know you have a meeting.
Very quickly. I was there at the old gentleman for a few tests two years ago. I got talking with the technician and said, where are you from? She says Townsend. Where are you from? I said, Dunsable. She said, Dunsable? What is it with you people? You can't go. You're two miles off the speed limit. Yeah. So we do have a wreck and that's good, but, you know, what can, how much can you talk to?
So what are you essentially asking of us? Is it to, to engage the state DOT to do a study or is it to?
I think that's.
Is it to just listen?
Know that Jason and the editor, I assume it was the editor, didn't sign it editor, but I assume it was the editor, because it wasn't signed by a citizen, that, and I've heard the comment by other people discussing this, the fear is that they might not go down. They might not stay for a while. That may have been so tasked, but I would question whether that's happening these days simply because this mandate is coming down from the federal transportation system. They pretty much feel that that whole method of setting the speed limits is quite outdated. I don't know if they've come up with a set of, new set of criteria or what.
Yeah.
But they're definitely, I guess, not that I read a cover of the column, but I actually used the article, let's see if I want to read something. It's called Streetswalk, and it's all about the safety of the streets. And the number of fatalities of bicyclists and pedestrians in state is up substantially. And, and so there is a movement to address it. Some spots may have the option of putting in a bike lane. I don't think we have too many streets.
Yeah, we have pretty tight roadways. Is this the same type of board that would say you need a stoplight somewhere? Like, I, I don't, I don't know enough about that, this, this study group, and the reason why I mentioned that.
Maybe the chief's a pod at once.
Okay. Is this the type of group that would put a stoplight, you know, at one thirteen and Platte, you know, in Groton Street there? This like study group that says your road or?
The study has gotten quite mixed. The last time I was involved with it, it was quite a long time, that was on Rod's year, it's just a trauma, so it's that a lot. And that was the instance, in that case, it did go up. It went from a third try to a fourth. And in fact, then, we did, they literally did that all the time. We sat out there, we had our personal cars with a radar back, and we clocked every car that went by and just make a list, and then they trip back down the back, get some sort of photo book, they crash that and all that, and that's how it came up. Whether or not that's what they still do, I don't know. Just expect a lot of that.
When they did one thirteen, they did the trial study in the speed study, and they kept consistently coming back and saying that this probably would be an area consistent with a thirty five mile an hour speed zone, but we kept it at twenty five. And people are doing thirty five, forty, do that, and use probably. It's, I do the twenty five specifically on the dot and people pile up behind you.
Oh, they pile up and I'll tell you, by the morning, they're on with a W O line when you're doing, because I do it purposely unless I'm really in a hurry for something. I, whatever that sign says is what I do.
Yeah.
Just send a message to the people driving behind you, but they get aggravated for true. They backfire for true.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, it is, it is a problem throughout the town, no matter what street you're on, what the speed limit is.
I would say it's time to run everything.
I'm not.
What's it, school street, I mean. Want to do them on school street.
Well, I think the thirty five section, right? Is that where your speed limit specifically?
Well, I'm unfortunate in that it goes from forty five to thirty five at the pepper side of the house next to it. So they're already doing fifty five.
Yeah.
And they're, they're not too quick to slow down. That's why maybe some flashing signs. I mean, there's no question when the cruisers are out and they see the cruiser, they're going to go slow a minute. How many traffic cams on Route three or wherever.
Well, right, I mean, the cruisers make the biggest impact, in my opinion. The flashing lights, people are going to slow down to get their speed go down, but once they're past that.
Well, I think the cruisers do, they do the same thing. I think once they're outside of the cruiser. I, just ask, do they give a ticket?
Yeah, so I pulled some data when I saw this on the agenda. So I looked back, I got some of the old records, which they're using the computer, and I can prove so far. So between, so we pulled data about the beginning of twenty twenty. So during this time, the area that we looked at was the post office to Pleasant Street, so that had improved some of the thirty five and some of the forty five. So in that area, we had thirty eight accidents in four years. Ten took place in twenty twenty, ten in twenty twenty one, and six in twenty twenty two, eight in twenty twenty three, and four in twenty twenty four so far. So the number is actually trending, it's really good, a couple months. Eight in twenty-twenty-three, and four in twenty-twenty-four so far. So the number is actually trending, and it's really a good amount, one side. So, and then I looked at each individual accident, starting in twenty-twenty, and I remember that brought up most of them were in the or a portion of them were in the thirty-five, or associated with the general storm in the parking lot. Quite a deal, because it's most of them were minor, if you're looking at major kinds of accidents. We had one rollover at Pleasant, we rolled into twenty-twenty. We had a two-car at Pleasant across. Other than that, there haven't been many, what I call, major accidents, or major accidents, or anything. People injured, they didn't transform to the hospital, not just as it looked at, because the cars always look at, but all the plastic. So it may not be a great track to, to face our concerns, but it's okay. Then again, the internet app, those adages. So since the beginning of twenty-twenty, we issued six hundred and sixty-nine money fines, just no fines in that area. That doesn't include written warnings, rollovers. And it's a special description of the justice committee. Citation, written warning board. And a lot of times, we take into account, of course, the driving record and things like that. If you're a habitual offender, you're probably willing to sit under the six in the next year. Then another thing I looked at, it's a little bit outside of the area, when we did the traffic study. During the traffic comes with the town, that's May. So they, they're covering. So they did a traffic study in three weeks. So in both directions, on 113, in that area, the farmhouse cafe, so along Pleasant Street. You had thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four cars average per day. So I didn't go back with the help of the cafe. So that's sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy cars on average, Monday through Friday. And three million and four hundred and twenty thousand cars a year. So I think, you know, looking at the number of cars that we have driving that way, and for me, thirty accidents in that stretch with that many cars, doesn't seem like a very high level.
It's about fifteen citations a month, over forty-four months, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four.
Just money fines?
Yeah, money fines, like...
Between that post office and DeKalb Street.
Yeah, so fifteen a month.
So one question I guess that would bring to mind would be you've got money to make the town walkable. Some of them.
Some, yeah.
If we...
So have these...
We didn't get money.
We got, we got A R P grant.
Twenty-five hundred bucks, right?
To do a study.
Yeah.
So what's that? But I thought it was an A R P grant for the sidewalks.
We said no to free sidewalks back in twenty-seventeen.
The what?
We said no to free sidewalks in twenty-seventeen, Rockford.
Yeah.
Which was great.
You didn't want sidewalks?
That's what the townspeople told us.
The grant was just to study the area, walk the area, to come up with recommendations on how to improve the area, put up some lights.
So we could use that if we would try to go forward to find money from a big tree out back. You know?
A grant.
It's a big money tree. We don't have to put sidewalks. I mean, it'd be great. It's a dream, but we were not given money to put sidewalks.
The other thing I pointed out, Eric, was Pepper from the Brook, who's a forehead. With twenty-five around the curve. But up until the lady with the hammer, it's forty-five. And their road is much straighter than our section of the road in the forty-five. Their forty mile an hour section is much straighter. And a lot, you go around town to surrounding towns, and it just, it seems like our limits are higher than than Rockford. The other town.
Well, one of those sections was because they had the study in the DOT, cannot raise them. So it was that backfiring.
No, no, they're lower. I mean, Groton is...
No, no, the section...
But for us.
For us, I'm sorry, because...
Well, isn't that why they straightened it?
No. No, I'm talking about over the other study, you know, it's been years ago, that raised the limit.
Oh. But they...
From thirty-five to forty. They didn't change it over a month or two.
Have you caught up with our road commissioners at all?
Have I what?
Caught up with our road commissioners at all, so they get their sense for things, because they are, you know, they have a role in this as well?
Just basically trying to bring it to attention and see if it's something that the town wants to address. Because I'd like to see it addressed, and I'm sure anybody that goes near that road could do anything in their yard. I'd like to see it addressed.
Okay.
It's, you know, at my age, it's kind of, it's in your mind, because getting off the tractor and you can only get off on the side because of the crit catcher and saying, "Boy, if I trip." That'd be it.
John, any questions? I think Groton has been talking about something similar to this, about making the the speed limits twenty-five on all the unmarked roads. That was it, wasn't it, Harold? But during the conversation, one of the selectmen stated that she doesn't speed in Dunstable. And she didn't have to go any further, you know? Apparently, she's been stopped. She said, "I don't know why, I don't know why, you know, Groton has more of a problem, but..." And somebody pointed out that, you know, they've got a lot more roads and and a lot more, you know, Dunstable has less making roads, and even though we have less, you know, police able to keep an eye on everything. But anyway, she she was adamant. She does not speed in Dunstable.
Well, that's good. I mean, there are plenty of people that do. There are a lot of people that speed, they're just going uncapped. And not only they speeding, but they tend to drive smack the middle of the road.
Now, that, I'm not sure that you know, there's anything you can do about that unless you're right on the scene at the...
Right, exactly, yes, yes. There's just a lot of unenforcement, and that happens, and it's just, we can't control that.
You can be everywhere all the time.
Right, right.
So the, Eric, the speed trail, the new speed trail, does that collect data?
It does.
Can we put that out there?
The cars that are riding, the speed that they're traveling at, and the time.
Does it take their picture?
No, 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 the picture.
You can take the tape off the plate now.
The jig is up.
That's right.
Anyway, it does have to be the light, the second figure, or someone obviously gets the image. We just got it. And to really sit there and judge it's down, you almost have to sit there, or you have to come and make the recording yourself than they compare to speed trail. I'm not sure if this will get every car, two cars are close together, if any people, if there's one car, I don't think that's a hundred percent. That might be interesting. If there is a new way to do the speed study, how would you make do it compared to how many people sit there? Would you physically sit there and wait on each car, and then record it in a book? And if you're having that?
I mean, it was my thought that if the section, if there was some forty-five mile an hour section, that that would slow them down. Like I said, if they've got it in their head that I can go ten miles an hour over, and I probably know I can get so out, then they're doing well over fifty.
Yeah, it was funny, and then I saw another thing, I went to the NACCT website about the speed service. And one of the comments that they did is that people, even though they know the speed limit, whether it's low or high, they have the speed that they feel comfortable, based on their probability of, you know, ability to report to you, basically, is what it comes down to. So whether we chase the speed limit or not, I don't know what it's looking about, because people would just travel at that speed that they would deal with.
Okay, okay.
I know another thing is people's perception, is that one of the comments made on my post was ninety percent of 113 is twenty-five miles an hour. Can't clock it. Twenty-eight percent is a twenty-five mile an hour.
Yeah, most of them are.
He thinks ninety percent is a twenty-five.
All right, well, I think we understand where you come from, Brian, and I don't think any of us are in disagreement that there are people speeding, and it's a dangerous area. I guess there's a couple of things that we could do. I would like to get the way in from the road commissioners, see what their thoughts are and stuff. Secondly, if we can put that up somewhere in this area that is speaking, look at the data, see what happens. Change your your enforcement look. I have enough.
Yeah, and that's what we do sometimes. We have some places in areas where the speed trail are out. You have us now, and then we're trying to get...
Yeah.
I mean, you're obviously having those off-field outliers that are positive, but if you can gather those consistency, and they're out there, and all of them are out there, and that's what we use. We just had the last part of Pleasant Street. It was at Groton, so it's gonna probably go up there.
Yeah.
Shortly. It's out now, like, you know, West Street is on. And then we're gonna have a couple of days.
Anything you could do.
So let's just, let's just have a, let's just have a little summary, all right? It's got an issue, and there needs to be some follow-up, right? Are you gonna place the speed trail? Are you gonna place the speed trail? Right? And you have, you are one of the guys who have the ability to pull the trail and take the data out of it.
You should have the tally for that.
And then, because we need technical assistance, you know, we can, I'm sure.
No, it gives us, it gives us the numbers. Please be safe, agree. That's not the problem.
And so can we have a follow-up in two weeks and take a look at the data that you collect? Is that reasonable, Eric?
Absolutely.
Let's just, let's take a look at it. Let's make an analysis, make an intelligent decision.
Where would you like to see the speed trail?
Well, I think that...
So you're in, like, one direction?
Yeah.
In one side?
Election, basically.
Yeah, we have a meeting in two weeks.
I think that, place, you know, I'm gonna tell you what, I do understand the traffic laws in Boston, they're loud. All right, India and St. Louis are a huge problem. People get run over, and they're already dead, it's a problem, right? So I get it, I understand it. And this road is relatively straight. It tends to be prone to people saying, "Yeah, let me just boot it a little bit," all right? And they do. There are no crosswalks in the world. The only person I know that walks across that street is gonna be sweet when he goes to the newspaper at six o'clock in the morning. Otherwise, I don't think you find a lot of people walking back and forth across the street. That I know of, we haven't had any pedestrian accidents.
Not especially down today, we have a lot of pedestrians.
So there hasn't been a lot of that, but let's, we have some technology with the speed trail, which is what? A month old now, two months old, relatively old? Let's take a look at it, and we'll get back in a couple of weeks and take a look at the data, Brian, and see, you know, where that, what that's telling us, right? And then we can go forward with it from that. I mean, as far as enforcement, I think you've heard from everybody that they do a reasonably good job at stepping up enforcement of it, but...
We just have a limited number. I mean, they're doing a great job in enforcement. We just really have...
I mean, they only have so much. I looked at Oak Street in May, at whoever it is burning their tires out on the street. I mean, that's, you know, that's, I don't know how, it's just reckless operation of motor vehicles, stupid to ruin the tires like that, but if that's what they wanna do. But like, my point with that is that you can't be everywhere all the time.
We already did the stop sign.
Yeah. So they're gonna put that speed trail out, you know, maybe in a couple of locations, right? Look at the eastbound side, and look at the westbound side, all right? And let's just do a little data crunching, and then come back to us in a couple of weeks.
Probably three weeks, November twelve.
Is that cool?
Yeah.
Come back three weeks, then share this information. Yeah, just get a... Get a, you know, just get a random sample of it, and, you know, the eastbound side, the westbound side. I mean, I have gone out Depot Street at five o'clock in the morning, and I've had to wait fifteen minutes for the traffic to come out, right? And so there is a window of time, you know, but it's pretty intense. Yeah. So let's just, let's do some random data collection, all right? And let's try to make some sense of it, and we'll get back with Brian, so he can see the numbers and understand how significant this issue is and what our path forward is. I agree, the state's probably gonna come in and do much about nothing. I don't know. I don't know. I will tell you that the improvements to 113 and Westwood Street were predominantly driven by the retaining wall was collapsing into a swamp.
Cover.
Call, was it? Yeah, that's, it wasn't a safety factor.
And then a couple of years before that, they had to do McGovern.
McGovern, right, right. So, I mean, that stuff got done that way, and there were some cross, like, Westwood Street is a I haven't been on it, but people say it's a lot more easy to access in the main road off of Westwood Street, because there's more space and stuff. And all that's said and done, and that's all good, but the conclusion here is that we'll get back in three weeks, right? And you can see it, because it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fine, and the police department will process it so that it's digestible and not too complicated to read, just a lot of the things that follow you. We'll go from there.
I would encourage you lastly to go to the road commissioners. Like, I mean, a lot of the great work that was done on 113 is because of Mr. Mike Martin and how tenacious she was with the group doing the work there. Like, he really, his imprint on that improvement and that visibility is a lot of his hard work and time spent with the folks doing the project, so. I think the road commissioners are great to...
All right, well, we spent thirty-five minutes on this issue. I think it's time for us to move forward.
Yes, if you get enough data, you can base it forward.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
First, that's a hard thing.
Oh, sorry. So you're gonna, you just put a lot of time and effort into this, and you have the other folks in the group that you're working with.
Sure.
If you, you maybe wanted, either wanted to give us a summary of what you've done.
Yeah, so there's a clean version in your packet, and you should have the redline version electronically. But what I did was I put for you guys this little packet here with Jason's kind of letter regarding the work that we did. So, you know, our, kind of our three goals were to update the language, make it more current, look at additional benefits for part-time employees, and then clarify some of the provisions in there. So what I did so that you don't have to kind of go through all of the mess in the redline version was I pulled out the changes of significance to go through those. So if you're looking at the packet, you're looking at the first page. We redefine the definitions of a full-time and a part-time employee. So the a full-time employee is now referred to as a benefit-eligible employee. So this is somebody that works between twenty and forty hours a week. And they would be eligible for full benefits. A permanent part-time employee used to be referred to as a part-time employee would be somebody that works between fifteen and nineteen hours a week throughout the year. And that this new change and this new definition would make them eligible for time-off benefits. So holiday, vacation, sick, personal bereavement on a prorated basis, based on the average number of hours that they work. So those are new, two new kind of updated definitions. Everything else in there was the same, so it was exempt grant employee, temporary employee. We didn't make any changes there. Do you want me to just keep going, or do you want me to stop and see if you have questions?
Oh, I'll interrupt you.
Okay.
John has a question first.
Okay.
Fifteen. Someone who works fifteen hours. Would you read again what they are eligible for?
So yes, it says, "The employee in this position works not more than nineteen hours and not less than fifteen hours per week. Works year-round. They're eligible for holiday, vacation, sick, personal, and bereavement leave on a prorated basis based on the average hours worked per week. Permanent part-time employees are ineligible for insurance benefits."
So no health insurance?
No, no insurance. Just time off. No, no insurance, just time off.
But they would be offered the same traditional holidays regardless, because it's a national holiday, right? Like, so what's?
Nobody else is working.
Right.
A building's closed.
Yeah. But like, but I, like, I know police is and fire, you know, may as well.
They're normally good for 15 hours a week.
Yeah. But then, like, if we were to close, if we were to give, like, an extra day, say we have a half-day Christmas Eve and we give a full day, we've gotta give the PTO to the police officers, but we also have to compensate that individual for the half-day's work.
Sorry.
So like, so I just, I'm just following up on like the, the employee in this position works not more than 19 hours per week. Permanent part-time employees are eligible for holiday, vacation, sick, and personal, personal days. So then if you, if we offered, so we typically do Christmas Eve days a half-day, right? By, by, by our books?
I think we've done it.
We've done it, but it's not.
I don't know if it's.
We've not written that way.
Okay.
Time of the house.
All right, trying to think of like an example of a day that we would give like a half-day on and then we say, all right, we're actually gonna do a full day for all the employees.
No, I'm thinking if they take a vacation, a holiday off, they would be paid that prorated amount of what they would had they worked.
Right.
They're not being paid for a whole day.
Yeah.
They're paid what they would be had they worked their five hours that day.
Yeah.
Three hours that day.
All right, sorry. I only, yeah, my only, this is sort of becoming, like, vacation time and PTO is becoming a thing where companies are just telling people it's unlimited because they don't wanna carry the liability. And I would love to get to that world. Because the liability of paying someone at the end when they have to leave, we did it with Brian, we had to deal with Tracy, we had to deal with the chief. And I think that was, it's big bucks at the end of it, so why not just tell them when they have a limited vacation?
That's a minute's worth. Yeah, I.
But if you can't, but if you can't do your job, then you, you're put on a performance approval plan.
I think that's, that's a big jump right there.
Yeah.
We're not set up for that.
Yeah.
But I mean, like, you, you're within like a collective bargaining agreement, so that gets outside the, the threat, but. All right, sorry, I will keep my mouth shut.
You can cross that line, mimic the business world quite yet.
Okay. So moving along, general conduct and standards. These bullets are, were added in and they're just more to kind of reemphasize transparency, ethics, the importance of representing the town in a positive manner. Yes, no?
Just going back to the last point. The rationale for looking at those employees between 15 and 19 is in offering them some level of benefits, which is basically the leave time portion, was because we are so heavily relying on part-time staff and that's not changing at any rate. And so the idea would, what's that?
Incentive.
Well, yeah, so make, make it, and we're not, you know, I mean, we're, we're going through a process now to look at our classification and compensation scheduling. So there may be some adjustment, adjustments coming forward there too, but it was really to make it more attractive place for those people who were heavily relying on them to make their choice. Was the idea, so. Just wanted to add that, sorry, sir.
No, that's okay, it's good. Any questions around general conduct? It's, I mean, there's nothing controversial in there, it's pretty much.
Chief? I hear there are new policies for those that are pretty good. Just because we, like, when we hire, we have them sign all those policies too, I was just gonna say, the new policies cannot be.
Yeah, so I think the idea was, once the new policy is blessed, as we have a meeting with all the employees, review it in detail, have them sign it, acknowledging it, and then as we bring in new people and it becomes part of the onboarding. The drug-free workplace, this, we did have an addition kind of there at the end from Labor Council and it was really because marijuana is legal in the state of Massachusetts. It just clarifies that even though it remains illegal federally and it may not be used on duty. So he put this language together, so we got that in there.
How do we manage things like disclosing the prescription in advance in a doctor's note? Who, who does that get shared with, just to?
What, what page are we on?
So this is page two, it's that last paragraph that Sue just mentioned about alcohol and drug testing policy. And it says, unless the employee discloses the prescription in advance and provides a doctor's note verifying the employee's use will not impair the employee's ability to blah blah blah. Who's collecting that?
So, I mean, it should go through the hierarchy.
The supervisor.
Supervisor, through, if there's a problem, then they would go to probably Jason and then they talk to us.
I wonder if we should identify the human, because there's a HIPAA thought there.
Yeah.
Where like if you tell chief and he tells Jason, then a few different people may know you can't, you know, turn left or whatever, or you take a certain medication, you know, like. And I, I worry, and that also makes, that's, that's a really vulnerable position for our administrator, our chief, and the other supervising party.
So under the.
HIPAA.
So under the five, uh, the town administrator is the personnel administrator, so I would, I would be responsible for administering this under the, under.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I maybe I would identify the town administrator in that paragraph. He's gonna take some pressure off the police chief purely, right? I, I don't know, I'm just speaking. Yeah. Okay. I just don't want us to get like, and I'm sure Mark Terry from Myra McConnell, I'm guessing he helped us with this paragraph because he's the.
This is, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't want us to be put in any vulnerable, because that's, that's the name of the game these days is people want to sue.
I agree with what you're saying, huh? I'm a little bit proud of that, just because he must have been having a bad hair day.
I mean, it is.
Right, because, well, think of corporate America.
Absolutely. That's exactly what this guy was having a day. And there's another one in here that really alarmed the.
Can I just, can I just make a comment that, I mean, there is, in multiple times throughout this policy, it emphasizes confidentiality. So, um, I, I don't know how many, if you wanna kind of put it everywhere, but it is, they're gonna acknowledge this and accept it, that they're responsible of ensuring confidentiality, confidentiality for our residents and for their employees.
Yeah, but then we, we get to get into that whole thing of managing confidentiality and who knows what and whether they need to know. I, I don't know what.
Well, we don't have an HR department to deal with that, so.
We know, but if you act a false to Jason, it'd be kind of administrative, which are HR personnel policy person.
But all this is saying, I mean, the, the policy that's been in place prohibits CD supplies, right? If it's a parent.
Right.
All this is saying is unless you can prove that it's required under doctor's supervision, yeah.
Well, I use my. Yeah. But I can, I'll use myself as an example, so I'm a type one diabetic. And I think people would have concerns with my ability to operate a forklift without knowing that my blood sugar was within a certain range. You know, and then I would have to tell my supervisor, say, it's Dave Tully, hey, Dave, like, I'm having a bad insulin day.
Yeah.
And he'd say, all right, you know, that you can't safely and effectively operate, but then should I report it to you and you've gotta tell Dave? Or should I report it to Dave and then now he knows a medical condition I have? That, I'm not trying to make too much of it, I'm just, I'm worrying about the legal liability that he, because if he says at Dunkin' Donuts, hey, you know that Kiran can't use the forklift, his blood sugar is always in the tank. You know? Because I've seen this, I saw it happen at Harvard Business School where someone found out they had a back issue and then couldn't lift the mail bins anymore. And then that, his manager told somebody without his approval, the manager, right out the door. Because he released medical, personal medical information.
Absolutely. Walked down that path.
But, and I'm not, so this is such a, it's such a good topic to discuss and it's really, it'll empower us to really get it, get it fine-tuned for.
So we'll get, we'll get clarity on that.
Maybe, maybe.
I think this changes the circumstances we're talking about because that's gonna happen whether or not it's changed, I guess. We will clarify what we just said.
The hierarchy info.
And I don't know if you even wanna have it, like, should we have a third-party HR provider? But that's a lot, a lot of people are going to that.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or pay me to do it.
Yeah, or have someone with an HR cert, you know, get an HR cert and then go from there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry. This is, this is great to discuss.
Yeah, no, no, we'll take it for sure. The next section is new, it's the working remotely section and we've gone through this one quite a bit with the team. So it's really to set expectations around working remotely in the case of weather, et cetera. So it kind of calls that out, weather situations, emergency situations. It's, it clarifies that expectations are the same, that it would be considered a workday. It also clarifies that it doesn't become permanent just because you're given permission to work from home, you know, for whatever reason. Appointments, there, in that section, the only thing that we clarified or changed was it used to state it's the policy of the town to prohibit relatives from working in the same department, provided that this rule shall not apply to relatives working in the same department prior to October 1st, 2010. So we changed it to prohibits relatives working in the same department in an employee-supervisor relationship. In addition, it is the policy of the town to prohibit a supervisor or board committee member from hiring a family member.
On the working remotely, and we probably have this in our policies, does it mention that you can't, you shall not be doing another job while working home, working from, for that symbol at home?
I don't think it does, actually.
You know, as someone who, who technically violated that.
Yeah, it's tough to, it's. Well, it sets expectations on if they're working from home, being able to perform the work as they would here, which would not allow them to do another job. But if you wanted, we could kind of call that piece out.
Yeah. We, I ran into that quite a few times in the previous.
So I did that and I know I'll be on the record and my friends at Harvard Business School would be ripped, but they were, like, I was doing real estate. I was doing real, like, Realtor work while doing my hourly job for them.
Remotely.
Remotely. Yeah, I was out showing a house, but I was also getting my hourly rate, which is really sketchy. I really shouldn't have been doing that. You know, but it's, it's not uncommon these days because I know contract friends of mine that.
Doing both jobs.
And job. Um, and then the other thing on working remotely, is there like a, I know, I think you mentioned the timeframe behind that? And like whether it's a, like a routine schedule, like, hey, you know, Eric's always gonna work from home on Wednesdays, you know, or is it something that? Pulling for you. Is there any thought to that, like, having that identified or would you rather keep it vague purposefully based on the need?
I think the way this is written, it allows the, well, the highest time administrator to approve remote work, that the position be eligible for remote work.
Okay.
And then, and then once that's done, the immediate supervisor then is responsible for program of remote work.
Okay.
On a case by case basis.
Cool, okay.
That's how it's, that's how it's written.
Yeah.
Is that sort of drive?
Yes, yep, yeah, 100%.
Cool, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're on time off. So, um, again, it's, there's just kind of some clarifications there around full-time versus permanent part-time. A change is our policy previously was you could use your time once it was accrued. And so what we've done is allowed employees to borrow against their accrued time. And if they happen to leave and they are in the negative, then they'll be responsible to pay that back to the town. So there was a lot of discussion around this and it really, like, a, a lot of it was around the DPW guys and the fact that they kind of have to take their time certain times of the year because of plowing and all of that stuff. So that was probably the biggest change in there. Any questions around that?
No, that's great, because I think that's a lot of places are doing that now.
Yeah. Let's see. In addition to that, we did change the time, the time earned or the time, so previously, if somebody was here. Oh, God, I'm sorry. We've increased the time off. So it used to be one to five years was 10 days, five to 10 years was 15 days, 15 to 20 years was 20 days, and then 20 years plus was 25 days. So we made an adjustment there, so if you're less than a year, then you can get up to 10 days prorated based on when you were hired. One to five years would be 15 days, five to 10 is 20, and 10 or more is 25. This is more in line with, we, we looked at the surrounding towns and what they're offering their employees and this is, we by far were the lowest as far as what we were offering, so this brings us more in line with surrounding communities.
Will that, that impact our police guys as well, right? No, did you, oh, so you guys do that your own?
Yeah, I think it's still.
Yeah, right. And yourself? Oh, that's right. Julie?
Five to 10 years, 20?
Four weeks.
So that's like three weeks. Is that 12, huh?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
For full-time, yeah.
That's pretty, that's, that's pretty consistent.
Yeah. It is pretty standard.
Yeah, it's pretty standard.
Yeah.
That's pretty consistent.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that, I'm sorry? Uh, so I know, it's that, that doesn't include, of course, any holidays or anything like that, holidays or whatever.
Just vacation.
How many holidays are there?
There are.
Depends on which, depends who you are, usually like 10 to 12.
It's all of our standard holidays and then recently added was June 17th. There we go. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King, President's Day, Patriots' Day, Memorial Day, June 17th, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas. So that's one, two, 12?
12.
But it's a three weeks, and then that just had the, that was written, for me at least, that was, that period of time where this didn't happen. Because I'm like, if you've been here four years and 11 months, you have two weeks vacation, that to me is not competitive in a market. All right, not even close.
We're burning our people out.
Close.
Yeah.
So to me, that needed to be increased. And because that's increased, it, it has the. And because that's increased, it, it has the, the effect downstream.
Yeah.
So, so that the five to ten and ten and more are increased.
But we need to worry about keeping employees, not so much what's going to happen, I mean, we have to consider the retirement factor, but we also have to have people who are working and have them be happy and be competitive. Everywhere else, or we're going to lose people.
Yeah.
So the truth is, if someone, someone could do that today and do it for thirty days instead of thirty times. And, and, and the case of people working twenty years and over, they could do it for thirty times.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a.
It's a five day week.
For most people, because it's not, we don't have a lot of people who've been there for twenty years, so for most people, it's a, it's a five day.
I, I want to go back on something because it's closures due to weather. Closures due to weather. It's a couple things going on. A closure could occur.
Oh, this is in a remote.
Yes. Yeah. A closure could occur because the building is not able to be open. We have a power outage, the heat stops working. And still does, it still does not work, and we can't, we can't open, right? This is what I know from corporate counsel on my side. If an employee comes to work and we are not able to provide them employment for whatever reason, we have to pay them a minimum of four hours. And, and what we're saying here is that if, if there's a blizzard, right, or there's something, and lights are out, or heat, whatever, right, and town administrator says town hall's closed today, right? These people now all have to take a vacation day.
Well, they need to start to work.
They're not eligible to work remotely, it says that right here.
Oh, if they're not eligible to work remotely.
Those people all now, and we've had, on the instances that I know, town hall was closed once because they had no heat, it was closed for a couple, three days. I don't know how it happened, I don't remember, I don't remember what the story was.
But this is.
And we certainly had hot snowstorms that have made it unsafe to come to work. And so what we're saying, I think, Sue, is that, what we're saying here is that if you need, if, if we decide that the town, the town services, municipal services are going to be curtailed because of weather or something else, and you are not eligible to work remotely, you're going to have to take a vacation day.
So that's not what this is supposed to say, or, so this is really, this is, so keep in mind, we're going to have, Jason's going to say, you're eligible, you, you can do your job from home. So let's get, you know, get you all worked up, and then you'll be ready to go if needed. So this is for those people, so, like me as an instance, I have a laptop and VPN. So if Jason says nobody's working today, and I'm like, oh, I didn't bring my laptop home, or what have you, whatever the issue is, I can't work, then I'd be expected to use my time. If, say, I didn't have power, that's different. But if you are eligible to work and you can't, then you're expected to use your time.
You're paid.
Okay, so.
Give up the.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
You didn't plan.
Right, but true, yeah.
If you had somebody who's been on the job four years, you know, three weeks vacation, they just say they go on home, we'll pay and take a day off.
So here's my thought, here's my, I, I, here's, I want to just continue with my thought process here, all right? We have had events, and, and I can think of a couple, where there was, we had a nice storm maybe twenty years ago, all right? And ninety-eight percent of the town had no electricity, right? And I think most or all of our employees are living in the town, right, most people do. No?
So you're back in the.
There's no electricity, as a result of that, the server upstairs is, okay, and no one can work remotely, they're going to pay.
Yeah, they're going to pay.
They're going to get paid. I, 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 in keeping with what Leah talked about, and I ascribe to this, we want town to be a good place to work, and we want longevity for our people. And I'm, I'm going to advocate that, and based on corporate counsel, from what I know from corporate world, if, if the employee or cannot have work for their employees, they're going to pay them, it's, it's whatever, it's it, there's no such thing as you got to use a vacation day. So my point with this is that I would like it to be that if town hall cannot be opened for some event other than weather, I, it could be, and power, transformable, we have no power.
Covid.
We, yeah, covid, and, and now, you, you got your laptop at home, but you're not going to be able to work because I serve it, there's no electricity to it. I, I'm going to advocate that, that Sue and all the others get paid for that time.
I think they would.
I'm not sure about that.
You would. If you are unable to fulfill your duties at home through no fault of your own, you will get paid.
Yeah.
So if I'm, if I'm told, in order to be able to work from home, you need to get VPN set up, and you need to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
And then we have a blizzard, and I never did it, should, should you pay me anyway for not working? Because I didn't take the steps to be prepared to work from home, even though if I did, I could. So that's kind of.
And we've already had some conversations with the president about it. Positions that could work from home that don't have the ability to now because they don't have the access, et cetera.
Yeah.
And so there, we're already starting to, I mean, with or without this changes, like that, it just makes sense to have that set up. So we're more for people to set that up, we don't have it, we want to, so. But that's not the, I'll, I'll say it this way, that is not the intention.
Right.
For sure.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the nuance is that if you were fully set up to work, and so we keep using the example, you were granted permission deemed to be able to work remotely, and we had an event, but you just, you know, left all your stuff here thinking, ah, the weather's going to be fine, I'll come back and get it in the morning. And it turns out you, town hall's closed, but you have electricity at your house, you set yourself up not to be able to be paid for that.
Right.
But two hours into the day, the power goes out, and you wouldn't have been able to do it anyway, then she gets paid.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to advocate that if we can't, if people can't come to work, we're going to give them, and, and because we're locked out, they're going to get days paid for that, that's, that would be my belief. But now, because it goes back to what Leah just said, yeah, you're all set, Sue, you got your laptop, you knew there was a storm, bear it home, you're doing whatever you're doing, and then the electricity goes out, right?
Right, so then she would be paid for that. Yes. But if the power didn't go out and she didn't set herself.
You're not getting any money.
No, she has to sacrifice it to take it.
I'm a little.
I see a hand up in the crowd.
And so we talked about town hall, town hall, please, how does it apply to people who don't work in the town hall? Might want to play that's covered by the personal policy.
It would depend, like, first, if they're covered by the personal policy, we have to determine can that person work or not work, and perform her work at home. If we were to decide that that person could perform or work at home, then it would apply as a threat. Not, not just for town hall, but for anyone covered under policy.
So if the town hall's closed for everybody, or is it just for the people that work here? You know what I mean, because we basically have power and gas and a fire and all that stuff, and he obviously has all the, you know, children that are not this whole time. But if it's town hall's closed for a blizzard, do I call or tell, hey, you're a town today, town hall's closed, or?
The way I would, the way I read this is if town hall's closed, but the police, the police station is open, which is probably the rules.
But then, we're saying then it would be. Do you need to drive to work because it's a blizzard and town hall's closed, but?
It's your, you would have, if you thought, if you wanted to say that that position should be able to work remotely from time to time with your approval. You could set that, I would have to review and approve it, that under the policy, and then in that case, you could, at your discretion, approve her, him from working from home.
Do you want to add about how many people are to work from home?
Nope, I mean, I, I was going to say nobody, and I'm not under this language, but I work from home on Fridays. Sue works from home on Fridays, Susan works from home on Fridays. Other than that, it's a case, I, a case by case basis, I don't, I don't want to, um, I don't want to speak incorrectly on that, so I don't want to name anyone else. But I think there are others who do want a case by case basis.
That are set up, that are set up to be able to work from home.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yep, Christina, because I think Christina's worked from home last week, yeah, so there are.
So it would make sense that everybody, is it, is it a big expense to make sure that everybody is able to work from home and?
No, no.
Because I, I think that most everyone has, most everyone who would be able to perform their job at home has a laptop. It's just a matter of setting up the VPN to make a connection to our server on the laptop, so it's not a huge expense for them.
We had, so, so when we were closed for covid, right, everybody worked from home, didn't, I, I, I could be wrong, is that, do I have that right?
We had a few people coming in.
We did, but they came in very selectively, early in the morning.
And almost, yeah.
Brian came in.
Brian came in. He was here pretty much all the time.
Brian came in, a lot, Bonnie, I think, was coming in.
Bonnie would come in, she did, Skar came in too.
Yep. Yeah, and they were kind of choosy with their times, but yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, one more, sorry, we're almost done. Oh, sorry, too, but I feel like we'll be quick. So sick leave buyback, I think Jason's probably discussed this one with you before, so it was previously twenty-five percent. The recommendation was to raise it to fifty percent, this is for employees hired after July first, there's only one employee that would be eligible for this.
Let's just, let's just, I'm full disclosure, I don't, I don't think this is a, I don't support this one.
I don't think that.
It's the only one I support.
And the team's not like, they haven't been passionate about this one.
What is industry standard, fifty seems.
I think, well, sick leave buyback's like kind of going away.
People don't, they don't do it.
They don't really try to get.
Yeah.
It's a bad, it's a bad policy, in my.
Yeah.
I'm not inclined to change that.
I think Labor Council agreed too, Jason, right, he said that's.
That was, that was his first comment to me, I said, don't want, I don't think it's a good idea, but no, I don't, I don't think that's a good one.
And we, tell me, tell me more about who's eligible and who's not, just like.
There's only one employee.
Because they were hired before twenty-ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it goes away with sick leave buyback?
Yeah.
But the business then, the twenty-five has been what it's been for.
Forever, since it's been, yeah.
What is our sick time policy, I don't see that in here, is it one day per month you earn?
It's one point, so for full time employees, that's one point two five days per month. Um, and then for part time, it would be pro rated.
Okay.
And we didn't make any changes to that.
And we obviously, if anybody's after twenty-ten, they're, July one, then they're not paid out.
Right. And there is a, we, there is a hundred and fifty day bank that you can keep of sick time, so we didn't change that either.
Yeah.
Once you get up there, you're capped.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty days.
Yeah. And then the last one was bereavement, so the bereavement policy was, was not great. This may seem kind of extreme, but this is really based on kind of corporate America where it's gone, so following the death of an immediate family member, excuse me, um, we went to ten consecutive calendar days or otherwise is approved. An immediate family member is a husband, wife, significant other, child, and then.
Is this something we're trying to vote on tonight, or what's our, what's our goal?
Things we need to run through.
Okay. No, this is great, though, super important discussion.
We will go back and talk about and probably check council on just kind of the reporting structure on providing alcohol session. We will clarify when someone's working remotely, they can't do that, and that is a possibility.
One of my friends is doing it, he's working two jobs because he's a contractor, like literally tech guy. I'm like, good for you.
I'm getting work jobs on.
I will, we will also look to clarify that if something extraordinary happens through the hospital room, and you cannot take your phone, and you cannot do your work at home, even though you're set up to do your work from home, then you will be paid for it that day. And I think this is a free day.
Yeah.
And then we can come back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Do you have any other comments between now and then, passing through?
We're not going to hold on this time.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure that we're all together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How are, from the administration side for you guys, like, are you finding that you're having to do this on a spreadsheet? Like, I know that was a question.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how are you doing it? Like, I imagine you guys must, you guys must have a spreadsheet down at the station for keeping tabs on.
Managing people find vacation things.
Yeah. I'm actually trying to put it in a slip, kind of slip, and then I expect you to settle that, this all your days that you're on, just for.
Yeah.
Or like, putting the naked shirt, plus if you think that you can use it and cross it off, I didn't have that in mind.
Okay.
So the, so the, so when you get a paycheck, does it not show on your paycheck what you have available?
It does, it's always there.
PTO?
And it's, and part of it is because the, the, the law system is based on approval, where our contracts get so much upfront, so that's why it's always there, so that's why we see that in ourselves.
So we've had, we have had, I mean, since I started, there were problems with the accruals.
Yeah, I know you're not talking about it way back.
It's been an ongoing chronic issue.
Yeah.
That should be mostly corrected at this point. Andrew spent, Andrew Wong tried to collect, he spent a lot of time on trying to make them accurate. And I think we're at a much better place, if there are still issues, we should talk about those, but he has made, he's spent, he's focused on that, and I think we're in pretty good, we're in a much better place than we were.
Yeah.
There may be some things here and there that may be true too, but Harper's has the ability to track all the.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not doing that, so.
Just don't want to add more to your busy plates already.
In July, when we get started, and the problem is the system set up to track approval, where our guys, they recruit, they get so much, they get a big chunk upfront, they all have that. So the number, like, at the beginning of the year, it showed negative, so we had to adjust it a bit, or repeat that, I think it's cut down, obviously, but come July one again, they probably, like, give those numbers again, so we can put them in and create some more sort of.
When, when we issue our payroll, the guys and the girls, they pay stuff, uh, digital. Did you, so we would not lose, no more pay stuff?
Other than, there were not even a handful of people, but there were some people who did not want to do that.
A physical check.
They want a, they want.
Are we doing that?
We're doing it for, I think, two people, two or three.
That's policy for.
A label, sorry.
For anyone who.
New, new hires.
Anyone new, direct the pause.
It was mandatory, yeah.
Yeah, we know what I wrote, checks.
It costs money?
It does cost money. There, there is a small group of people who want to do that.
If I can add one last thing, that, a couple of things that we did not include in our suggestions, but maybe might come your way in the next year or so, is the municipalities surrounding us, most of them have a stay bonus or longevity bonus. So like every five years, you get a certain amount, knowing where we're at, but we didn't even want to go in there with that. And then the town contribute, contribution to life insurance. So it's a two, you get a two thousand dollar life insurance policy, so we'd like more. So it's a two, you get a $2,000 life insurance policy. So we'd like more.
So if you have, so the death benefit is $2,000?
Yeah.
I think that gets you into a funeral home.
Right.
I want to give you a couple of slums.
You might have someone with an excavator out back, give you a hole.
But that, you know, that's, we didn't want to go there, um, you know, at this time.
That'll get you cremated, won't it?
Well, I'll do the cremation, just throw it all, do the bonfire, call it a day. Get a case of beers.
Oh, we'll make it a new world. Burn fest at Lorna Field.
All the bodies. Bring your pine trees, bring your brother, here we go.
Be Y O B. All right, we need to move on here.
Yeah, that's good though. Yes, that's an important one to revisit at some point.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right. Are we good on this one for now?
Yeah, it's, thank you for doing it. It's a really important topic, and it's, I think it's good for us.
What's the longevity? What's, what's the longevity? What, Special Town Meeting? How many, how many years is it going to be available?
They, it's like a range, so it'll be like a 5 to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 25, you get a certain amount. The, the amounts vary based on the community, but Pepperell has one if you want to check out there.
Were you gonna give us a couple of years to think of?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, if you hear it again in a couple of years, then you'll be like, oh yeah, she mentioned that.
I mean, I think we have it in some of our other contractual.
Yeah, yeah, they do have.
Yeah, yeah, we do. It's almost like the teachers have their steps and their programming, their lanes and traffic lights, so.
Explains brackets. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Special Town Meeting warrant. For our Special Town Meeting, which is November 18.
It is.
Yeah. It's a short one.
It's gonna be a party.
Yeah.
So yeah, the only, so there have been some additions since last time.
So 10 articles.
10 articles. There are some community preservation committee articles that have been added that we're not, we're trying to coordinate a meeting now. One is, um, some funds to help update our open space and work plan. We have a grant application to help us fund that, but we haven't heard if we're getting that, so as a backup. We wanted to ask for some CPA funds to support that for.
The time is, the needs, the, the open space plan expires in March of 2025, and we need to have that updated. Um, it's a fair amount of work. We've tried to do it ourselves and on the mission, but we're just hitting a point where it'd be so much easier for. Nimco or whoever, who has all that data at three buttons on the computer to get it.
So hopefully we get the grant and we don't need the money, but there's no guarantee, and we don't want to miss.
We can't let this expire.
Because the open space and work plan allows us to provide for a whole lot of governance that where.
Yeah.
We've seen some success in security, so we don't want to miss out on that. And then, as you know, the tennis courts at Liger Field, there was a, um. There was a change order to the contract because there was unsuitable fill found underneath when they started excavating. So there's a need for just shy of $5,000 to cover the change order. If we, if the CPC does not want to allow CPA money for that. REC is prepared to use revolving funds, revolving fund money for it. The preference is to use CPA if that's an option.
Okay.
And then we have two citizen petitions that we, that we received yesterday. And they have been certified with 100 signatures each, so they will be PR number one for the 18. One is to require any override request to be basically presented as a menu, one for the municipal side, one for the school side. Specifically, it actually says we're on the school district. And then one for electronic voting requirement at annual and special town meetings. So those are the two citizen petitions, and those are the two additions, the CPA articles, are the two additions on our side.
So for this one, has there been any information submitted as what sort of cost this would be to the town if this were?
Could cost you money, and you get, you talk about electronic voting?
Time, money.
Yeah, it's been done in Groton and hasn't.
So there was no other backup information submitted, but was just, not like the trickle effect of what would happen if this was happening?
Sure, no issue. With one caveat, the petitioner did send, uh. I think it was a few slides, three or four slides, which in fairness, I have not dove into greatly, so like it could have information on there that. Helps to illustrate the need and the costs and all that. Um, what it takes to implement and everything. It could, it could.
It could be in there.
Could be in there, so I just haven't looked at it.
But if you have it, then you can send it along or whatever.
General of the cost?
Yeah, well, I mean, you don't just automatically.
You don't.
Get electronic voting.
For, for Article 9, what if it's a year where you're not having a municipal override, it's just a school looking for $100,000? So then it's not a menu, right? It just sort of becomes this is the Groton Dunston Regional School District.
I don't know.
Okay.
More questions?
Yeah, um, yeah, I will continue to ponder my questions. I think that's not, it's not a super clear, um, you know, article, if you will. To my, I mean, I think it's, it leaves people asking more questions than it's gonna provide answers, so.
Do you foresee day 10, uh, the time when we won't need a municipal program?
For the town side?
We're close.
It's never, I mean, on the town side, it's never a huge number. Most, I mean, it. It's usually what I would describe as a manageable number. Will we ever have a year we don't need one? I think that's, I think that's possible, yeah.
The flaw in this type of vote, this type of proposition or article. Is that if you, if you just vote the municipal one year and you add the police officer outside, the following year. The number, you could just, you'd be laying off the police officer to balance out your school budget. Because the overrides for one year and then the number just remains. It doesn't identify that it has to remain a constant.
No, overrides are not, overrides continue.
Right, but like, yeah, if it's one year, it was we need to add a police officer over $70,000. And then you do that because you pass the override. The next year after that, you just have $70,000 more dollars in your bucket. And you have that police officer.
Part of your budget going forward with that position.
But then like if you're doing it based on percentages, like 23% goes to the school and 77%, like whatever the breakdown is. You, you may end up just laying off the police officer. Doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that you're gonna do it every year.
Yeah, I mean, the issue to your point.
We did that once before.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue becomes. From a long, from a longer term perspective, if one year you go and say, okay, we need $8,000 to balance the town side. And we're able to have the police officer say, and we need. $250,000 for the school side assessment, for the school side assessment. And town side passes, school doesn't. The 70 next year is still not gonna cover, the additional 70 is still not gonna cover the 250 that you need the following year. So now what do we do?
The 250, we still have to pay, we just have to money.
Right.
Well, 250 now becomes 180 because you have 70 from the police officer.
So you think, well, last year, town meeting voted to put that extra money for the police officer, and that's where we're gonna put it?
I wouldn't say you couldn't say that. I'd say you still have a financial problem.
It doesn't guarantee that they do it one year, that it's gonna be good for the next. It's always, it's a moving target. Because it's a long-term budget problem.
A number of years ago, we had an override specifically for a snow.
Mm-hmm, cover what?
Cover our snow emergency, the, the old, the old spending, the snow bucket. And it was $200,000?
Yeah, two, yeah.
Somewhere around that. And the advisory board put the position that we had, we historically. Uh, funded the snow removal. It wasn't enough money to beat you up.
Mm-hmm.
And we said, this override is specifically for snow removal, let's pump the snow bucket up. And I think it's still the same today as it was back then.
Probably.
Because the feeling was that it was for a specific purpose. I don't know why it was an override to add a pop. Or a highway guy, or, you know, any, any number of things. It's going to be a recurring expense. I, I don't see why you couldn't, you know, take the position that, okay, well, that, that $70,000 or $80,000, $90,000, whatever the number is. Couldn't be, you know, dedicated to that, that line, right?
Well, Snow and Ice has its own special guidelines, though.
Snow and Ice, Snow and Ice, the reason it's probably the same amount is because. If you increase Snow and Ice, you can't, you can't decrease it.
Yeah, it can get affected.
If you decrease it, you can't declare a snow.
If you decrease the money, then you hit on the recap for refunds.
Yeah.
So like they penalize you for, for reducing. So you got, so basically, most communities just keep it, keep it where it is. It's that, because you can overspend, you're allowed, that's one of the areas you're probably over spending.
Yeah, I mean, I encourage the petitioner to advocate for it. Good luck.
As far as the electronic voting goes, uh, I asked the petitioner. What's, what's the class in the store? Around $20,000 or $300 devices? But we don't need, we don't need 800, but we might be able to sell some to Groton or some to some other towns.
Well, there's a little more to it than just getting a device, or someone's definitely able to support that technically. I mean, everybody's got a button, and when your button doesn't work.
Laptop or something that these things are. I mean, you watch Groton, it's instantaneous. Okay, the voting's all okay, there was 100, you know, 104 and 10 against, and I mean, it's not, it doesn't take very long, so it's gotta be some kind of. Devices.
Well, what if they're rigged?
They're rigged.
What if it's not legit?
They're voting machines, they might be rigged.
I would rather spend some money on getting people to come to the meeting, rather than doing electronic voting. You know, I think it's, we need to get more people to show up and participate, rather than worry about electronic voting.
Yeah, I'd probably be inclined to do that.
Right? Like we get, sometimes we get 100 people for the fall.
Well, the reason people want, the reason they want electronic voting is they, because they wanna be able to, you know, to, uh. Express their, you know, choice without everybody knowing. So that's the problem. Remember, uh.
Yeah, people don't seem to have a problem expressing their choices throughout town, so.
Bingo. Well done, Leo. Hats off to that. That's good.
This is, yeah, this is, uh, you know, a situation where, yes, you know, there was some, there was, uh. Uh, one of our neighbors who, every year, came to town meeting and wanted to seek a ballot. And this is just an extension, I think, of, of that monison.
I, I mean, I, I understand that, but it, you know. If the town votes for it, they vote for it, if they don't, they don't. If they do, that is now, that is another significant.
Cost to you.
Cost to the town.
We need an override for that.
That ought to be, that ought to be on the menu.
So where does that money come from?
It isn't, it's just the money, and you can, someone needs to be there to manage that system at town. There's gotta be tech support when this thing, I mean, Groton had a failure with that. The thing didn't work, it was communication. We, you know, with this, we get, what do we get? 100 people at a town meeting?
We're doing the best we can with a slideshow up on a wall, like a, a concrete wall.
On a block wall.
On a block wall with a black duct tape.
That's what they're.
That's our screen.
I'm not trying to.
My, my suggestion for the petitioner was that we, if, if we wanted to look at this, have a develop, I'm not gonna meet another committee, but. Develop a group of people to actually like do some work on what, what are our options, what are the costs? What would it take to implement? What kind of tech support and expertise do you need to actually make sure these are operating properly? Policies perceived like all of that, like just so we understand what it takes to implement before we dive into it. And my worry is that something like this passes without fully understanding what it takes.
Yeah, but at this point, this is going to a town meeting vote in, in March, correct? So, and she's got a citizen petition, and this thing's going on the warrant.
Correctly.
And there was no, and there's no other, there's no other wiggle room with this, right?
No, it has to, it has to be put on the warrant.
Yeah, we're, this is.
At a town meeting votes it in, unless the motion says it fails. Well, unless the motion says to create a.
If somebody gets up and says, hey, you know, we don't know enough about this, we need to look into it.
But that's exactly the point with this discussion, is we don't know enough about it. And to Karen's point, you know, we've got 100 people at town meeting, I get the whole thing of, you know, oh, I think. You voted that way? I thought you said you weren't gonna do that! And so this eliminates that, but it creates a whole lot of other problems along the way.
If you want to make it, the percentage of people with a sign petition off the town meeting. I think it should be mandatory. Yeah, well.
All right, are we ready to go on?
Heather Pratt, she got the signatures.
Yeah.
So I move to approve the Special Town Meeting warrant as presented and to sponsor. Article 1, unpaid bills of FY '24. Article 2, cell tower on water tank. Article 3, High Street property conservation restriction. Article 4, acceptance of donation of land, 19 Lowell Street. Article 5, creation of, creation of capital improvement program stabilization fund. Those are the articles that we are going to promote also.
Do we need to read aloud the Article 6 and 7, 8, 9, and 10, or are we just voting on the ones that we're advocating for?
They're voting to approve the warrant.
We have approved the entire warrant.
But just sponsor those that were.
Okay. So, uh, thank you. Ron, second.
Any further discussion? Fals in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, um. Project agreement, High Street map 15 lots 2 and 3B, the land grant program. So this was.
This is for the High Street property.
Yeah, we just needed to tweak the language and leave voters, even though the grant.
Well, this, yeah, exactly, and this is for the actual land grant, this project agreement, so, um. And it is for the Kennedy Conservation Restriction that we do.
Which has already been voted and approved and received and.
We have, we have been notified that we are receiving $6,870 to support the purchase of the CR. Um, we do need, we do need that vote at the Special Town Meeting.
Yeah.
If anything were to happen that, that vote didn't happen the way we expected to, then we just wouldn't get the money, and we wouldn't be able to forward.
Right?
Yeah.
Move to approve the land acquisition for natural. Diversity program project agreement for acquiring a conservation restriction on approximately 29.8 acres. Located on High Street, assesses map 15 lots 2 and 3B. Known as the Kennedy Conservation Restriction. And authorize the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
Second.
On for you.
John? Is that, is this for just a portion of that, that, wasn't there 50, 100 acres in that? In that, the Kennedy, uh, restory?
I don't remember the entire, I don't remember the entire area, but I think there was, I don't know if I must speak. It's down there.
I can't remember the details, I'm trying to remember the details, but remember the initial. I can't remember the, I'm trying to remember the details, but remember the initial proposal had three lots included? And then it was reduced to two lots, and the two lots are 29.8 acres. Maybe the adding back the third one was the 50. I think you might be right about that.
Yeah, you go in, it was 10 of CR, put on it, it's going to be included as part of CR.
Maybe the first, maybe the first part was properly, was approved, you know, correctly, but maybe this part didn't.
You know, that parcel was never, was not part of the, the vote at the last town meeting, nor this one. And it's not part of the land grant project. So that was removed at one point before town, before our annual town meeting. I can't remember why.
Yeah, we, but we still, it's, we still, you know, got the 53 acres, didn't we?
I don't know.
No, we did, because there's a portion of it, of the leave that was going to be, we weren't necessarily purchasing, but was going to be included with, as part of the CR or something.
So maybe Alan kept following the bargain and the, you know, the sale or something, maybe that's it.
I just remember putting the map to presentation together. The first one had the third parcel, and then we removed the third parcel coming. And I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact details on that.
In my brain.
I think it was going to be going into that someplace.
Somehow it's going to be part of it, as part of the CR, I think, but not part of the purchase.
Right.
Yeah. Essentially, it was donated.
Whatever, we, we might just want to go with that.
This is, this is the second time around on this, so this is the correct one.
It's ac, it's absolutely accurate.
Oh, yeah.
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 Goodness.
Yeah, it's the same number on the other chip, it's the same number on the warrant, which was reviewed and draft by Alan. So we're, it's, it's the right number.
Uh, good. Proclamation to Marion Starter Day.
Move to approve the proclamation declaring October 25th, 2024 as Marion Starter Day.
Second. Discussion on this. Falls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is this from now on, every October 25th?
No, it's to the specific year, once. October 23rd and 2024, that's it.
So there's going to be, so they've renamed the, one of the middle school buildings after her name. And on Friday, there's going to be a...
No, I, I remember that they did rename one of the middle schools. I just wondered.
I mean, you're happy to celebrate it every, I mean, you're happy to celebrate it every October 25th, you like.
I'll try that again.
Yeah, no.
You can use your, use your vacation time now.
Okay, I think that's it. I think that's enough.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.